Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tempe City Council Regular Council Meeting. I remember what is called order. If you're here to speak on items designated as public hearing items later on the agenda, please know that you will have an opportunity to speak when I introduce these items at the time of their public hearing. The city council will need to complete the other items of business leading up to those items, so we appreciate your patience. Also, I wanted to note, too, council meetings can be watched in real time via Cox Cable Channel 11 and at tempe.gov/tempe11. Members of the public may also attend this meeting virtually through Microsoft Teams. If you wish to speak on a public hearing item but haven't filled out a speaker card yet, please make sure to fill out and submit your completed card to the city clerk prior to the agenda item coming forward for council discussion. I will call your name when it is your turn for public comment. I'd now like to invite everyone who's able and willing to stand to join me in a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you very much. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Once again, just want to note that tonight's agenda has a number of items that the city council must consider in order to conduct city business. Guidelines for conduct at city council meetings are on the table near the entrance for those in attendance at tonight's meeting. We will now play a video with the proper protocol for ensuring the appropriate conduct at city council meetings.
The city of Tempe welcomes public comment at this time. Disruptive behavior will not be allowed. Continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. We need to be able to hear everyone in the room. Behavior that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of any city council meeting is not helpful and is not permitted. This includes behavior both inside and outside of the council chambers. Should individuals inside the council chambers become disruptive so that city business is not able to be conducted, the mayor will first ask that the individuals allow city business to be completed. There will be time for public comment during the call to the audience portion of the meeting. If no cooperation, the mayor will issue a verbal warning and let them know that the continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If there is still no cooperation, the mayor will issue a second verbal warning and let them know that the continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If there is no cooperation after asking and two verbal warnings, then the mayor will ask security officers to remove only those individuals who are causing the disruption. Security personnel should not engage in any way but only escort them from the council chambers. If individuals refuse to leave, security personnel shall warn them that they are trespassing and that the next step will be arrest by a Tempe police officer. Tempe officers may have to arrest if individuals refuse to leave. Charges for trespass and disorderly conduct may apply, as well as other charges. Should anyone be asked to be removed, the mayor will recess the meeting.
All right. Thank you. We will now play a video conveying the city of Tempe's native land acknowledgement statement as well.
We wish to acknowledge that Tempe is the homeland of the native people who have inhabited this landscape since time immemorial. These ancestral lands of the Aatham, known as Pima, Peepash, known as the Maricopa, and their ancestors extend far beyond our city. This land continues to be spiritually connected to the Aatham of the Salt River Pima, Maricopa Indian Community, and Hila River Indian Community. We accept the responsibility of stewarding those places and solemnly pledge to consider this commitment in every action.
All right. Wonderful. Thank you so much. Next up, we're going to move to item number four, meeting minutes. Tonight, I'll be assisted by Councilmember Garland. Councilmember Garland?
Yep. Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes listed as four A on the agenda.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilmember Garland and seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote.
Yes.
And that item passes six to zero with Councilmember Navarro absent. Next up, we have item four B, acceptance of board, commission, and committee meeting minutes. Councilmember Garland?
I'd like to make motion to accept the board and commission and committee meeting minutes, four B one through four B six.
Second. Been moved by Councilmember Garland. I'm giving the second to Councilmember Chin this time. Please vote.
Yes.
And that item also passes six to zero with Councilmember Navarro absent. All right. Next up, we have item number five, reports and announcements. I have one. And let's see, if the council could actually join me, because I know we're going to have a separate one right after this, so if you can kind of join me downstairs, that we're downstairs, down there, that'd be great. So we have a proclamation here for Lights On After School Day, and that proclamation reads, "Whereas the citizens of Tempe stand firmly committed to quality after-school programs and opportunities..." And before I keep reading this, are there any members of staff here who are here to accept this proclamation this evening? I realize I was so excited to get going on it, I'm like, I gotta invite someone to take it. I always say the rule of being mayor is that if you walk out with the proclamation, you're doing a terrible job, so.
Why don't you guys get invited, Mayor?
Welcome. All right. Good to see you all. All right. So I'll start it from the top, then. "Whereas the citizens of Tempe stand firmly committed to quality after-school programs and opportunities because they provide safe and engaging learning experiences that help children realize their full potential, support working families by ensuring their children are safe and productive when they are out of their classrooms, build stronger communities by involving students, parents, business leaders, and adult volunteers in the lives of young people, thereby promoting positive relationships among youth, families, and adults, and engage families, schools, and community partners in advancing the welfare of our children. And whereas, after-school programs provide critical support for the academic growth and well-being of youth and offer new experiences and opportunities that help young people learn and grow. After-school programs provide innovative, hands-on opportunities for youth to engage in learning and connect with caring adults and peers in a safe and supportive environment. These supports are all the more important today in the wake of the pandemic. And whereas, the city of Tempe has provided significant leadership in the area of community involvement in the education and well-being of our youth, grounded in the principle that quality after-school programs are key to helping our children become successful adults. And whereas, Lights On After School, the national celebration of after-school programs held this year on October 26, 2023, promotes the importance of quality after-school programs in the lives of children, families, and communities. And whereas, many after-school programs across the country are facing operating challenges so severe that they are being forced to consider closing their doors and turning off their lights, while nearly 25 million families report that they would enroll their child in an after-school program if one were available. For every child in a program, there are four waiting to get in. And whereas, the city of Tempe is committed to investing in the health and safety of all young people by providing expanded learning opportunities that help our children learn and grow while helping them develop the skills essential for success in life and work by ensuring that they... Whoa, that's interesting. By ensuring that the lights stay on and the doors stay open for all children after school. Now therefore, I, Corey Woods, Mayor of the city of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare October 26, 2023 as Lights On After School Day in Tempe, Arizona." Want to come all together?
One, two, three, big smile, and do one more?
Thank you. And council, if you could stay down here with me, that would be wonderful. That does end my announcements, but I know I've got to go to our city manager who has an announcement as well. Madam City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I may ask our communications and marketing team to join us at the dais, and perhaps Jared, you can take the camera. Okay. Perfect. Perfect. We're thinking of everything. We want to make everyone included. I'd like to congratulate our communications and marketing office for receiving the awards of recent 2023 Copper Anvil Awards. Our communications and marketing office brought home four honors, including the top award for communication team from the Public Relations Society of America 2023 Copper Anvil Awards. The Public Relations Society of America hosts these awards to recognize excellence in public relations across Arizona. A Copper Anvil Award is considered one of the highest honors in the industry. Arizona advertising agencies, public relation firms, marketing companies, and many government agencies, businesses, and schools compete for this award. Judging is done by the PRSA members in other states with criteria including industry, best practices, and results. So out of the four awards, first is the highly coveted Communications Team of the Year Award, given to the one group for overall excellence. Second is the first-place Copper Anvil Award for Tempe This Week, the podcast. A second-place award of merit for community relations for the Refresh Tempe Campaign. And a second-place award of merit for We Are Tempe, a video produced for last year's State of the City. So congratulations to our entire team. Thank you, Mayor.
I'll do my best Jason in any of my tricks. All right. Here we go.
Wait, 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 wait.
All right. Fantastic. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. One more, just to be safe.
Super safe, too.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it once again. Briefly playing the role of Jason Wolf, Sapan. All right. Congressman Sapan. Next up, public appearances. Item number six, according to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the city council may only discuss matters listed elsewhere on this agenda for discussion and legal action. The purpose of the open call to the public is to allow individuals to address the city council on any issue within the jurisdiction of the city council. No person shall speak more than once, and there is a limit of three minutes per speaker. Speakers present at the podium must state their name and city of residence and provide a speaker card. Members of the public shall refrain from making personal impertinent or slanderous remarks and from becoming boisterous while addressing the city council or while attending the meeting. Speakers will be taken first come, first served, in the order in which the cards are received. Speakers' visual aids and appearances by phone recordings are not allowed. Council members are prohibited by state law from taking action on, commenting, or discussing a matter raised by a member of the public, even if asked to do so by a member of the public, so long as the subject discussed by the speaker is not listed as a specific agenda item for council's consideration for discussion and legal action. At the conclusion of public appearances, the council may ask the city manager to review a matter or place a matter on the future agenda. With that, I've got one card here, and the card here is from Joseph Kepfer. Is Mr. Kepfer here or virtual?
Present.
Present. Okay. I'll do one last call out. Is Mr. Kepfer here this evening? All right. Seeing none, okay, I will go ahead and close that portion of the agenda. So next up here, we're going to take this slightly out of order this evening. So I just received one quick request. We're going to move up the only ordinance, second read item, which is 8C1, because we do have people here, I know, who are speaking on that item. We want to make sure that they don't have to hang out with us all night if they don't like to, although I think we're pretty fun. Item 8C1 is also scheduled for a second public hearing and final adoption, was read and introduced back on October 12, 2023, and a vote on this item will be taken this evening. The first and only item under the section is 8C1, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance amending the Tempe City Code by adding a new section to Chapter 16A, creating a requirement for a new tobacco seller's license, and amending Article II relating to smoking pollution control to increase the minimum age for the purchase of tobacco products to age 21. First of all, council, are there any questions for staff on this item?
I make a motion.
Well, we got to go to the public hearing first, so.
Oh, sir.
Can you rescind that?
Is that rescind my motion?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. No worries. No, I get it. I get it. She was excited to see this happen. So let's see. The only thing I was going to say, and I know Councilmember Navarro unfortunately couldn't be here this evening, but he just wanted to relay how he's in very much strong support of this item, and I know he worked on this item very much so with Councilmember Garland and their council committee, and I know even though he couldn't join us, he just wanted to say he's very excited about this and thinks this is a very positive step forward for Tempe and especially for our youth. With that, I will go to the public hearing portion, and I have a few cards here on that item.
Is this when we talk, too? If we're going to say something, or is it later?
We're going to go after the public hearing portion, so. Yep. Okay. So with that said, I'm going to go to the public hearing section, and I've got a few cards here in front of me. The first card I've received this evening is from Floyd Galloway. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Woods, council members. My name is Floyd Alvin Galloway. I'm a resident of Tempe, and for many, many months, we have worked on this issue on the tobacco ordinance. First, there was a strong ordinance, a comprehensive ordinance, that banned, that looked at banning all flavored tobacco products. And now we're at a junction where it has been watered down, and I know through compromise, these things happen, but I'm hopefully having a, I think, a positive feeling that this is a first step. I implore the city council that this is a first step, the ordinance to raise the age to 21 and require licensing for tobacco retailers. Because I feel, one, that Tempe has too many tobacco retailers, because you can look at just about every retail intersection, and there's some type of tobacco retailer there that is impacting our youth today. Also, I implore that the city have some type of enforcement, because just to have an ordinance requiring the age, raising the age without a enforcement mechanism does really nothing because it doesn't really hold the retailers accountable, because it's just like having a skeleton in a closet, and you're rattling it, and it doesn't scare anybody because it has no meat to it. So I thank the city for this ordinance of raising the age limit and the licensing process, but implore that it is just a first step. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Galloway. Appreciate it. The next speaker I have is Joe Uhas. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the council, Joe Uhas, once again introducing myself as a resident of that suburban community to the north and west of the great city of Tempe known as Phoenix. I want to thank you for the opportunity to come before you after what has become a two-year saga. I mean, in that time, you've produced this really slick video on how to behave at a council meeting. I hope we had nothing to do with that, but it has been a long, drawn-out process, and as Floyd indicated, you know, we hope this is a first step. I'm not going to go through all of the things that we've shared with you previously. 154 tobacco retailers in Tempe, 53% of them having been cited for the sale of tobacco products to youth, a third of them more than one time. The size of the coalition that has asked for your help and support, including the Tempe Union High School District, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, the Tempe Coalition. Instead, what I'm going to do is talk about the future, but I have to go back to the hearing of two weeks ago. And I'm not going to say the gentleman's name because I couldn't really make it out on the tape, but I would urge you to go back to last week's hearing at the two-minute, two-hour, three-minute, and 34-second mark. And Councilwoman Garland called this gentleman out, to her credit, where he said, "I don't allow my children to use these products. I'm very strict about that." It struck me that these merchants of death have no problem selling these products, but as if they're either in a complete moment of like utter candor or the belief that they're somehow doing the Lord's work, they're keeping these products away from their own children. After tonight, what I hope you will do, and this is clearly, you know, this is great, this is going to be a seven-zero vote, Tempe's going to be the third community in the state to have a tobacco retail license requirement. I hope in the months and years ahead, you ask yourself, are we doing enough? Are we doing enough to keep these products out of the hands of kids? Are we doing enough to work with our schools? Are we doing enough for our students, including those who go to these after-school programs that you just cited, and these retailers are within 100 feet of those after-school programs? Are you doing enough to help the parents who are beside themselves because they don't know what to do? How are their kids getting these products? And also, are you doing enough realizing that there are merchants in this city who have no problem selling their products, including kids, especially because they know that money is paying for their kids' tuition? Outrageous. Absolutely outrageous. So you need to ask yourself after tonight, yes, move forward on licensing, but are you doing enough? And I would argue that licensing alone with an anemic enforcement and compliance measure isn't enough. I hope it's a first start. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker I have this evening is Erin Streeter. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Mayor Woods, Tempe City Council, thank you for allowing me to speak, and thank you for moving up the agenda item. I mean, I'm one that we could have stayed here, and I would have been just fine with it, but thank you anyway. For the record, my name is Erin Streeter, and I'm the State Government Relations Director for the American Heart Association. We do greatly appreciate the city of Tempe to take the time to craft an ordinance to keep track of tobacco retailers through a license and raising the tobacco sales age from 18 to 21. To ensure the policy works as intended and protect our kids in Tempe, it is imperative for the council to come back soon and include a process for the city council to conduct an annual unannounced compliance check on all tobacco retailers. It is still too easy for retailers to sell tobacco products to kids. Middle and high school students report buying e-cigarettes in places like gas stations and convenience stores. Local data shows that over 53% of Tempe tobacco retailers have been cited for tobacco sales violation, primarily selling tobacco to kids. Over 33% of those retailers have been cited multiple times. Through compliance checks, retailers are more likely to follow all state, federal, and local tobacco laws preventing tobacco sales to youth. Strong retail licensure requirements are a proven way to keep tobacco companies and their dangerous products away from kids. We urge this council to commit to checking 100% of retailers annually and to make that commitment happen as soon as possible. Annual unannounced compliance checks are the only way for Tempe to ensure local stores are following the law and not selling deadly addictive products, tobacco products, to kids. All of us here want to protect our youth, and I understand that, and we do appreciate Tempe's leadership and commitment to this goal. We hope the council will continue to work with us as key stakeholders to further strengthen the ordinance and keep tobacco retailers accountable. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The next speaker I have is Trish Hart, who I believe is virtual.
She's not here.
She's not here. Okay. And not here, okay? All right. The next speaker I have is Bernice Carver.
Ms. Carver, you can turn on your mic and speak, please.
Hi, Ms. Carver. Can you hear me?
She didn't turn on the mic yet.
Okay, I'll try one more time. Ms. Carver, can you hear me? If you can, you can turn on your mic. Okay, let me go to the next speaker then, and I'll see if I can try, come back one more time. The last card I have here is from Stephanie Siete.
Ms. Siete, you can turn on your mic and speak, please.
Hi, this is Stephanie Siete. Thank you, Mayor Woods, and rest of the council members for listening to us for like the last, I say, couple of years. It's been almost two years, and really, I'm not going to repeat myself over and over, and I hear Floyd, and I hear Joe, and some of our other supportive partners. I just want to say thank you that we've gotten to where we are with this license. It's just so important that we increase that age, and obviously, the license is important, and we have to follow through with the enforcement, which I hope that all continues. But it wouldn't be me if I didn't say that the work that I've been doing for 20 years with the Tempe Coalition of Community Bridges to save lives, to protect these kids, I would just say, there's nothing good about vaping, period. Like, there's nothing good about regular vaping, flavored vaping. There's nothing good for a kid. There's nothing good for an adult. I think we have to remember the takeaway here, that the bigger picture is, we're trying to help people. And all this studying and researching over the years, the one thing that just stood out to me as we were doing this conversation about what we should do with this ordinance is in 2009, if you look it up, there's actually a Family Smoking Prevention and Tobacco Control Act that was put in place to ban flavored cigarettes, not e-cigarettes, it's banning flavored cigarettes to address youth-targeted appeal of tobacco. And I don't know why, less than five years later, it was okay to have the electronic form of the flavored products. So I think it's just something to think about, the bigger picture of what we still need to do with this ordinance and future follow-ups, just to save lives. As a reminder, you know, there are 2.5 million kids using this. As a reminder, someone dies from drug overdose every five minutes in this country. I think, I'm just thinking about people and their lives and their health tonight, no matter what. This is a risky behavior. Vaping's not good for anyone. Thank you for taking this ordinance serious, taking the time for all of us, and I look forward to future meetings and doing what I can to protect youth and adults. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. And I'll try one last time here to go back to Bernice Carver.
She has her hand up. Can you hear me? I'm Bernice Carver.
Yes, hi. Can you please state your name and place of residence? You have three minutes.
My name is Bernice Carver. I live in Flagstaff, Arizona. I have friends and family and lots of people down in Tempe that I know that I've known for decades. When we worked on our ordinance up here in Flagstaff, tobacco lobbyists brought manipulated Tempe ordinances up to Flagstaff to try to help water down our Flagstaff ordinance, but they were not successful because they were discovered. And anyway, I have some amendments. I went through your ordinance, and I went through the Americans for Nonsmokers Rights model policy, and on page five of the draft ordinance that states marijuana products are not covered in this ordinance, that should be deleted. Any product that includes tobacco, nicotine, or synthetic nicotine should be included under this licensing ordinance. There are many products that combine marijuana and tobacco that are on the market, and many, many, many more to come. No one selling a tobacco product should be excluded. That's on page five, item five. On page 16 of the draft ordinance, the definition of smoker-smoking, it would be wise to include the definition of the Americans for Nonsmokers Rights model. It is tried and true and has been legally challenged, and it's solid, and it covers more situations and emerging products. On page 18, section 22 to 24, please add and company vehicles to the list of areas where smoking is prohibited, so people don't have to ride in company vehicles that have second-hand and third-hand smoke in them. On page 18, section 22 to 45, where smoking is not regulated, please amend items. Private residences should not be connected or adjoined to other residences or areas where second-hand smoke can infiltrate the adjoining structures or areas. Multi-unit housing should always be smoke-free because of the infiltration of both tobacco, marijuana, meth smoke, any kind of drug smoke that can infiltrate the buildings. Item two, hotel and motel rooms should be deleted. Item three, retail tobacco stores should be deleted as they are workplaces with employees and first responders. as they are workplaces with employees and first responders and others who must be able to access the premises. We do not allow drinking in liquor stores. Why should we allow smoking in tobacco stores? This will give a level playing field to all tobacco retailers, whether they are standalone buildings or not. On stage, smoking should be deleted as an exemption also. Conference, meeting rooms.
Ms. Carver, that, that's time, I'm sorry.
Okay, I sent this to you ahead of time.
Yes.
And I beg you to add these comments to you before your vote.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. All right, that is all the cards I have this evening. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? If so, please get my attention. Okay. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing portion and I will go back to my colleagues for comments. Councilmember Hodge, did you have something?
I'll let everybody do it.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, then let me look to see if there are any comments or discussion from council. Vice Mayor Adams and Councilmember Garland? And, yes, okay.
Well, I'm completely supportive.
Okay, got it.
I'm completely supportive of this and make a motion to approve.
Okay. So let's do this. I'll, I have the motion. Let me do a second and we'll continue the conversation. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Chin. So the motion's been made by Vice Mayor Adams, seconded by Councilmember Chin. Now we'll continue with comments. Councilmember Garland?
Okay. Thank you. I just want to say that there is a lot of work that was put into this ordinance. And I just want to say thank you to my, my colleague, Councilmember Navarro, who is not here, who really, really wanted to be here because this is really, truly important to him also. You know, I look at this as this is going to be, this is going to be a first step. This is the, the first step that we have. I have made notes of the amendments, the discussions that was just made on comments. So I appreciate that. But I'm, I'm comfortable with us moving forward with what we have right now. You know, Arizona right now is only, is one of 10 states that does not have a statewide licensing setup for us. And I think that what we're going to have to do is look at what we can do to join Flagstaff and Tucson. And hopefully, this will get passed tonight and that we'll be, we will be able to do that. I think what we need to be doing is looking at the data. And after a year of collecting data, what I'd like to be able to see is for us to come back together and look at that data and then look at any of the changes or adjustments that we might want to make. So this isn't the end of this discussion. I think it's really just a beginning for us. And, you know, looking at something that I'm still interested in is looking at banning flavored, all flavored tobaccos in the City of Tempe. Again, that, that was where we started. This is where we're at now, but it doesn't mean we can't go back and do some more research. I just want to say again, thank you to everybody. And, and looking at this licensing, I think, look at this licensing as being educational for our businesses that are out there. We don't even know exactly how many businesses we have because we don't have the license. So this will really be able to help us out with that. I know that we want to do 100% compliance checks. I know that that was mentioned. That's not going to happen in the first year. But again, we are going to take these steps. We are going to make adjustments. We're going to look at this data in a year and then we can move on. And I just want to say thank you for all the speakers who have come on both sides of this issue to kind of help us, the people who have attended our Human Services and Community Safety Committee meeting. We really appreciate that and I look forward to our vote. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hodge?
Okay. Also, I want to say thank you to everyone who has spoke on this in the last couple of years. As you know, I am on the Tempe Union Governing Board and we did pass this. And this has been an issue that has been plaguing our schools, all of our schools, for many, many years. And I just thank the City of Tempe for being one of the, one of the top three to actually do that and pass that ordinance. I understand that everybody wants it to be, you know, the 100% go, go, go. But it does sometimes take time to push it all together. But as Councilmember Garland said, this is just the beginning of what we're going to do. We're going to continue. I am one too. I want, I want flavored tobacco all gone. Enough of my people have been affected by it. And it was targeted for African-Americans in the beginning. So I understand. I'm going to continue to fight on both sides of education and within the city. I want to thank all of our staff for all the, all the work they have put into it. Councilmember Garland and Navarro, thank you so much for bringing it. You know, when I, when it first came, I wasn't even on council. I was actually fighting it on the other side, on the school board. So I just thank you for being strong partners throughout this whole time with it and actually including me throughout the whole time, even before I was on council to help with this. So thank you guys so much. I also want to tell everybody out there who's been working on it, this, the fight is not over. We got to continue. And you know what? We just, this is just one city. We got to continue into every, every city because it's not going to be a statewide situation. We're going to have to take this one bite at a time per city. And I'm just proud and honored to say that Tempe is one of the top three to do it and we will continue to fight. Thank you so much. And I am supporting 100% on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Keating?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Garland and, and Councilmember Navarro for, for bringing this forward. Of course, all the members of the public who have come to speak to us many, many times over this process. This is definitely an ordinance that I can be proud to support and look forward to any sort of discussions about expansion as far as enforcement goes in the future. So I will be supporting this tonight and I appreciate the fact that we've gotten to this point. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Keating? All right, any other comments from council? After none, okay, once again, the motion was made and seconded. Please vote.
Yes.
And that item passes six to zero with Councilmember Navarro absent. All right. Next up here, item number seven, Consent Agenda. All items listed on the Consent Agenda will be considered as a group and will be enacted with one motion by the city council unless an item is removed for separate consideration. Members of the public may remove public hearing items for separate consideration. Public hearing items are designated as public hearing item at the beginning of the item title. Council members may remove any item for separate consideration or to declare a conflict of interest. If a council member would like to declare a conflict at this time, the city clerk will provide the council member with a disclosure form. If you wish to speak on a public hearing item, please fill out a speaker card and submit your completed card to the city clerk prior to the agenda item coming forward for council discussion. I will call your name when it is your turn for public comment. This evening, the Consent Agenda consists of miscellaneous items 7A1 through 7A6, with the exception of item 7A6, which has been pulled and will be voted upon separately, awards of bids and contracts, item 7B1 through 7B8, and resolutions, item 7C1 through 7C11. Once again, any agenda item designated as public hearing item can be removed by a member of the public for separate consideration. If anyone would like to have a public hearing item removed, please get my attention now. All right, seeing none. Madam Clerk, were there any comments received from the public wishing to address the city council on a consent agenda, public hearing item?
No requests to speak.
Okay, thank you very much. Counsel, are there any other agenda items that you'd like have removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration, with the exception of item 7A6, which has already been removed? All right, hearing none, then I will look for a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item 7A6.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved by Councilmember Hodge and seconded by Vice Mayor Adams. Please vote.
Yes.
And that item passes six to zero with Councilmember Navarro absent. Which brings us to item 7A6, which is to approve the appointment of an employment agreement for Cara A. Derastia as city clerk. I know, Councilmember Hodge, you'd asked for this to be removed earlier, so I'm going to have you go first.
Okay. Well, I, I wanted to remove it because I just wanted to personally congratulate her on becoming our city clerk. And I am so excited and honored. And I wanted to actually make the motion myself. So I would like to move to approve 7A6.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Hodge. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Adams. Councilmember Keating?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment before we vote.
Yes, please.
I would just like to congratulate Cara on her appointment. You did an excellent job in the past in our city clerk's office and deputy city clerk and then interim city clerk. And, you know, it's a natural progression and you've been with the city for a very long time. And we're very glad to have appointed you to this and I have no doubt that you'll continue to do a fantastic job. So congratulations to you and thank you very much for your continued service.
Awesome. Thank you. Councilmember Garland?
I just want to say, I, I mentioned this to her earlier today, but I got a text message from our former city clerk who was very excited about you taking this position and she knows that you have what it takes to get it done. So just want to tell you, say that.
Excellent. Thank you. Anyone else comments? Vice Mayor?
I'm just, congratulations. You've, you've earned it. You've been, been through all the trenches and, and look forward to working with you in the future. So thank you.
Thank you. I'll just, Councilmember Chin?
I'll just say to Cara, just wanted to say congratulations as well. I know a little bit before the vote actually goes down, but I am super excited for you. I've really enjoyed getting to know you. The folks at the clerk's office know that I'm pretty much downstairs in the clerk's office at least once a day, just going down to visit them and have conversations and just sort of see if they need anything from me or from the council. But I've really enjoyed getting to know you and spending so much time with you over the last, probably, I would say, six, seven, eight months, especially as we've talked a lot more. There were times I remember being away at a couple of conferences. And I would, sometimes I would call you, but there were a lot of times where you would just text me or call me about agenda items that needed to be moved around or with suggestions for how we could make the meeting move even more smoothly. So I've really enjoyed just seeing you in this job and I have no doubt that you're going to do an exceptional job on behalf of the City of Tempe and all of our residents. So I am super excited for you and just congratulations on taking this next step.
I am too.
And that's, Councilmember Chin?
Thank you, Mayor. Gosh, I don't know about you, Cara, but I'm excited. I wonder how this is going to go, right? The vote. I'm, I've really enjoyed working with you in the interim role and my best wish is for you continuing to grow and flourish.
Sounds good. All right. So we've had a motion and a second. Are any other further comments or discussion by council?
Let's vote.
Seeing none, please vote.
Yes.
And that item passes six to zero with Councilmember Navarro absent. By the way, too, Cara's husband and son are here as well, if you wouldn't mind standing up and being recognized as well. Awesome. Thank you so much for being here this evening. All right, next I'm going to go here to the non-consent agenda, which is item eight. All items listed on the non-consent agenda will be considered separately. Agenda items scheduled for introduction and first public hearing will be heard but will not be voted upon at this meeting. Agenda items scheduled for second public hearing and final adoption will be voted upon tonight. Council members who may have a conflict of interest may abstain from voting on a matter and the city clerk will provide the council members with the disclosure form at this time. First up, 8A, miscellaneous items, bids, contracts, and resolutions. 8A1 is to approve a two-year contract renewal with Worldwide Technology LLC and ITP Consulting Incorporated, doing business as IT partners for Hewlett-Packard Enterprise Computer Servers and related enterprise products and services. Council members, any comments or discussion?
So moved.
Been moved by Councilmember Hodge and seconded, was that, Councilmember Garland? Or it's Keating? Oh, it's Keating. Okay, wonderful. All right, please vote.
Yes.
And that item passes six to zero with Councilmember Navarro absent. I don't know, Councilmember, I heard you say something. I just couldn't tell what it was, so.
I said it, but I gave it to you.
Ah, fair, okay, fair enough. All right, so I, I'm not hearing.
We do sound alike, Mayor.
I'm not. It's been a long week, Councilmember Keating. The next item under the section is 8A2, which is to award two-year contracts with three one-year renewal options to Artistic Land Management, Dusty Landscaping, I love that, Dusty Landscaping, and King's Landscape and Maintenance for the installation of landscaping and irrigation for street beautification and right-of-way landscaping projects for the Engineering and Transportation Department. Council, any comments or discussion? Do I have a motion? Moved by Councilmember Hodge, seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote. Vice Mayor? And that item passes six to zero with Councilmember Navarro absent. The next item under the section is 8A3, which was to award a construction contract to Institute Form Technologies LLC for the Wastewater Collection System Rehabilitation 2023 project. Council, any comments or discussion? Thank you. Motion by Vice Mayor Adams, seconded by Councilmember Chin. Please vote.
Yes.
That item passes six to zero with Councilmember Navarro absent. The last item under the section is 8A4, which is to award the construction contract to Hayden Building Corporation for the Tempe Municipal Operations Center, GMP Number Five, Phase Two, Foundations and Pre-Start Item Allowances Project.
Motion.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Adams. Have a second? Seconded by Councilmember.
Can I just comment on it?
Yes, you sure can, please.
This is really important. I, I had the privilege of getting a tour of the Tempe Municipal Operations Center a couple of weeks ago and it was super exciting and it's going to be such cutting edge and really be able to, to move our city forward. So I will be supporting that this evening.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other comments? All right. Seeing none, please vote. Councilmember Keating? Okay, thank you. And that item is approved, six to zero with Councilmember Navarro absent. The next section on the non-consent agenda is ordinances and items for introduction and first hearing. The items under the section will be read and introduced tonight, but no vote will be taken. The second hearing and votes are scheduled for November 30th, 2023. The first item under the section is 8B1, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the granting of a power distribution easement to Salt River Project Agricultural Improvement and Power District over certain city-owned property identified by APN 132-36-031 and authorizing the mayor or his designated executive an easement agreement and related documents. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? If so, please get my attention. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing portion. Council, any comments or discussion? All right, the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for November 30th, 2023. The next item under the section is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance, amending zoning and development code, section 3-428, vacation and short-term rentals, and section 6-313, security plans based on prior city code changes and a change to section 4-204, standards for building height in GID and HID district from 35 feet to a maximum 65-foot height. For the Tempe Zoning and Development Code, the City of Tempe is the applicant. Council, any questions for staff on this item? Seeing none, once again, this is a public hearing item. Seeing none, once again, this is a public hearing item. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council, please get my attention. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing portion. Council, any further comments or discussion? Seeing none, the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for November 30th, 2023. The last item under the section is 8B3, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to amend the Tempe City Code amending Chapter 2, Article 8, related to human relations and Chapter 22, Article 5, related to fair housing to prohibit discrimination in the selling, renting, or leasing of housing based on source of income. Council, any questions for staff on this item? Seeing none, once again, this is also a public hearing item. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this, please get my attention. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Just want to reiterate, the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for November 30th, 2023. That brings me to the end of the agenda. Item nine, current events, council announcements and future agenda items. Once again, council members can request that an agenda item also during this session be added to a future council meeting during their allotted time, but in accordance with the Arizona Open Meeting Law, there should be no discussion on the item other than to clarify the request. With that, I will go ahead and call upon council members for their comments and I'm going to start this evening with Vice Mayor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one announcement. Uh, I want to thank Wagner Neighborhood for meeting at the park last night. We had over 60 people come to the park last night and it was on game seven of the Diamondbacks, so it was quite impressive and everyone got to express their feelings and we really had some good, um, good results. Uh, it was good to hear your, your concerns and to actually absolutely resolve the issue. I also want to thank Alex, Craig, and Keith for helping answer all of those questions. And finally, last but certainly not least, I want to thank Brooke for setting it all up. So what a great, one of the best neighborhood, um, interactions I've ever had. So thanks to all those neighbors out there. Some of you told me that you watched council meetings and thanks for coming and, and bringing all of this, uh, important information to my attention. Thank you. No more further announcements.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Next up, I'm going to go to Councilmember Chin.
No announcements.
Thank you. Uh, next up, Councilmember Garland.
Thank you, Mayor. I think, oh, the first one I have, uh, so I just want to say, I don't know if, um, how many people have driven, um, down the, um, and seen this beautiful Peterson House that's in Tempe on Southern. It's really incredible. It's, it's, it's even more beautiful if you go at Christmas time and see, um, what it looks like on the inside when they have the decorations and the Victorian, um, setup that they have on the inside. I just wanted to say that it, it is open. It's open from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Um, the address is on the screen right now and I'll say that the, the last time that I was at the Peterson House was a, um, historic preservation event that happened there and Eduardo Yates, who just recently passed away, who was born in Tempe, um, was actually at the house and took me upstairs and showed me the bedroom that she lived in, in this house and gave me a tour of the house and, and I learned some really beautiful stories from her and unfortunately she just recently passed away, so I want to say very sorry and condolences to her family, but if you get an opportunity to go visit this house, I really recommend it, especially during the holiday season. And then, um, uh, I think our city manager might have to help me with this, but, um, the hap, the happy group that you went and visited with, Hablar Para Integrar?
Perfect.
I'm close. I got it. Um, is a really special organization that is in Tempe. It's found, they have it in Tempe. It's founded, powered, and led by women and it's a first-of-its-kind educational organization and the mission is to empower immigrant Latino adults through rapid teaching methods to teach their personal and professional goals for themselves and their families and, and, um, really become a part of the community and this, this group really helps and I just have to say, I think, one of the things that's really, I think, is impressive about our city manager is that she doesn't just hear about these groups, um, but goes and, and listens and, and sits with them and I just wanted to give you an opportunity. I thought it was amazing that you went there and, and were with them last night.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Garland, yes. The group started actually as an in-kind, the city offers space for them to meet. It was their 10-year anniversary. They started with 12 students and, uh, they now had 223. I wish I could have pulled up the picture and maybe in the future, but it's really, um, they pride themselves on helping people not just understand the language, but the culture of America and the integration in jobs and communities and they chose us because of our inclusive practices 10 years ago, so I'm very proud of that program. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for going there.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Uh, next up, Councilmember Hodge.
Okay, um, well, this, uh, October 28th is Breakfast with Burdette and this is a very important one for me because this is the one that actually you can get free vaccines for the, for COVID boosters and also you can get your flu shots. And it doesn't matter if you have insurance or don't have insurance, you will be seen and taken care of and there is no age limit on, uh, the booster, so good for our kids. It's all out there. If anybody you know who needs this, it's at the Tempe Library, please come by and get your free booster shot. Maricopa County will be there and they also will be giving more health information out, so if you need screening for anything else, this is the time that you can get that and they will be there to help with that, so I'm excited for that. Okay, funny, I don't usually do Breakfast with Burdette right back to back, but Cul-de-sac is having like their soft, um, opening and they invited me to be a part of it because they loved my Breakfast with Burdette and they ever get a chance to go, so they wanted to combine it together, so I'm doing another, but this is not breakfast. It's slash breakfast slash dinner and that's all Chris, because Chris came up with that idea, thank you, um, to do a dinner instead of a breakfast, so thank you, um, we're going to do that on Friday, November 3rd and that starts at, I think, four o'clock, four to six, so, and it's a chance to get to know the Cul-de-sac community and it's going to be phenomenal because they have so much open and I've been a part, I've been watching it. I go every month to Cul-de-sac and I take a tour of something new that they have out and about and I'm seeing every little project as it came through and I'm just excited to see it all come together. So please come out and see Cul-de-sac, get some good dinners and you still get to have the breakfast slash dinner with Burdette. And gay night was, oh my God, I had so much fun on gay night. I actually, I finished 20 different gay nights, so I went to 20 different events and, on gay night and I must have seen my city manager there at multiple ones and we finally ended the night together, so, you know, we, we are very lucky in the city of Tempe that we actually have our city staff, you know, come out and actually, and be involved in, in on this level to our city manager who takes time out of her day and night and works all the time, but out there on a Saturday and spending a lot of time within neighborhoods, so thank you for doing that. A lot of people may not understand and see that, they only see one part of you, but they don't see how invested you are in all of our neighborhoods and just thank you for doing that. And, um, we also have, uh, Tempe launches a new city community, um, enrichment division for our alley safety. Congratulations on that, so I'm, can't wait to continue that launch and I know that's something that our city manager, another thing that she's invested a lot of time and effort in, so congratulations on that too. And last but not least, I'm going to say the same thing again. You know, we have the best teams in, in Tempe. I just want to say again, congratulations, all the stuff, you guys kick butt, I mean, literally on the stuff that you do and we just, uh, it's just an honor and, and a privilege to work with you guys on this level and all the things that you do and you support us in so many different ways, so every reward that you received is well reserved, well received, well. You have earned every bit of it, so thank you for everything. I'm so proud. I love now that I'm going to this League of Cities because I'm going to be bragging on the city of Tempe. I get a lot to brag about. Thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you, Councilmember Hodge. Councilmember Keating?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to wish all Tempeans a happy and safe Halloween. If you're an adult, make sure you celebrate responsibly. You'll look like a fool on body camera footage when you're pulled over in your, in your clown costume and, and if you're a child, uh, please have a great time. Make sure to brush your teeth before you go to bed. You won't end up with a bunch of cavities like me and, um, I, hopefully, as, as Arizona's, uh, or as... Oops, sorry, I muted there for a second. Um, hopefully as the council's, uh, you know, resident sports fan, next time we get together for a council meeting, we'll have celebrated a world championship by our Arizona Diamondbacks. I cannot believe how exciting this season has been and how exciting this, these playoffs have been and, you know, best wishes from the city of Tempe to you Diamondbacks. Bring us home a championship because we haven't had one in 22 years. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, so just a couple of very quick things, uh, just, one, wanted to thank, uh, we, I did a lot of shooting this morning for my, uh, annual State of the City video and just wanted to thank some of the staff who were with me, uh, Chris Baxter-Ging and Jason Wolf and Eddie Garcia, uh, who really coordinate the entire morning and follow me around as I have an opportunity to, uh, chat with local business owners and retailers and just sort of see a lot of the really cool spots that make Tempe such a wonderful and unique place to be, but I just really appreciate all the work that they do in terms of coordinating with all the owners and the people running those places, uh, to all the different shots they get from video to stills to drone footage to GoPro. I mean, they pretty much do all of it. I can't tell you exactly where I was because you have to come to State of the City on December 8th and I'm not giving any spoilers, uh, but honestly, they did such an exceptional job and I just appreciate them coordinating everything and making it all so smooth and so seamless, so thank you so much, really appreciate everything you do. Yes, Councilmember Garland?
Jason, I want to see his outtakes. I think we should share them at some meeting. There were none?
I have, I have a file folder.
Oh, good, oh, good.
They might just, they might just be in my hand, but Councilmember Garland's not seeing them, so, no. Oh, um, okay, uh, Vice Mayor saying I should, I should probably talk about State of the City at the time, so it is, uh, it is, it is Friday, December 8th, uh, at the Omni, at the New Omni Hotel, which opened up in April, uh, late April, uh, and I've got a 7:00 AM or probably 7:30 AM start time, so if you haven't got your tickets yet, make sure to contact the Tempe Chamber of Commerce because it is a chamber-sponsored event, so you get a chance to hear about all the things going on at the city. Thank you, Vice Mayor, for reminding me, appreciate that. Um, and just the last thing I was going to say, just as a sort of brief note as well, just wanted to say thank you to the residents of the Shalimar neighborhood, had an opportunity to have a, uh, second public meeting with them, uh, just last night.